Please stand in the court. Want to introduce to the fighting of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry about that. It's still turned up. Welcome everyone. Don't have a terrible long agenda, so hopefully you can do this rather quickly. I'll do a rule call. Myself, Tyler here, John Morris. President, Colin, President, Alan Kershner, and I'm assuming he kind of forgot about the meeting.
That is Colin. You got any news, man?
Heather?
Heather.
Doug Coleman is our administrator.
President.
And Alexandra Cole, recording secretary. Motion to approve the agenda as per the...
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Colin, second by Heather, to approve the agenda. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. I'll make a motion that we appoint Alexandra Cole as the recording secretary for this floor. Second?
Yes.
Second by myself, or first. Motion by myself, second by Heather. All favors say aye. Close. Motion carried. Motion to approve, I'll give this from previous meeting, which was April 17, 2025. Copy here if nobody else has...
I'll make a motion to approve that.
And a motion by Colin, I'll second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Good.
No, you're doing fine. You're fine.
You are in control, by the way, if we get going too fast. So now stop us.
I'll let you go. Let me get that hand and look on my face. No.
This time, is there any public comments on the agenda-related items?
Do you just know how far we're getting along with putting the planning commission meeting minutes online? I know they're working on doing an update for the whole village.
I don't know the answer to that. I think Lacey took these minutes at the last meeting, and Alexandra here will obviously have these meetings for the next.
These will be posted tonight, probably.
Okay.
Well, they won't go online, but they'll be ready, and then they get approved at the next meeting.
Yeah, I just didn't... I just wanted to know how far we were to getting them online.
Oh, okay, well, these last ones were online.
Okay.
Are you looking for, like, more historical?
Yes.
Any other non-agency related items? Clear enough? We move on from that. This time, we'll open a public hearing for the following special use exemption, use permit related to 716 Saw Morris Avenue, LRS LLC. Is that right, Doug?
Yes.
I'll go ahead. Okay, sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Colin. Second by Heather to go into the public hearing. Doug, I'll turn this over to you for the second.
Good evening, everyone. I have given you a staff report regarding this request. This is a special exception use permit for 716 Saw Morris Avenue. Give you a little back history on this. So, back a few years ago, the village opted out not to allow marijuana establishments in the village White Pigeon. It went pretty smoothly until several months ago, we had a petition presented to the village, both the village here and Motville Township requesting a petition of referendum. A petition of referendum would be taking this to a vote with the people, and typically when referendums are requested, they come in and they want all 10 license levels, and they want unlimited of all 10 license levels. That, for a small community, could be catastrophic. And so, to get ahead of the ballgame, both the village White Pigeon and Motville Township went through amended their zoning ordinance to allow retail marijuana establishments in specific zoning districts. They capped it at two, and they allowed no other type of marijuana in the village, whether it's growing, processing, testing, transporting. The only thing that's going to be allowed in is the two retail dispensaries. So, we have taken control of it. We did amend our zoning ordinance to allow for it in the specific zoning district, and we have also created what's called a police-powered ordinance, which are the do's and the don'ts, the cans and the cannots of what they do with their operation, as far as, like, hours of business, you know, if they're closed on holidays, things like that. So that's how we got to where we're at today. So we did, the village council did pass the police-powered ordinance and allowed to take in licenses or applications for licenses on April the first. They did receive two. LRS is one of them. The village council has approved both this license and one other application to operate a retail marijuana establishment in the village White Pigeon. So, in this request that you have before you this evening is 716 Saw Morris Avenue, it does fall within the GCLI zoning district, which is the district that, one of the districts that it is allowed in. It is a dispenser, a retail establishment, is not allowed within 1,000 feet of a school, it's not allowed within 500 feet of a church, and it is not allowed within 100 feet from a residential building. This, although it is a little bit outside, Motville Township elected not to include any radius from a church, so we decided that it would be kind of unfair. On the east side of 131 is the village, on the west side of 131 is Motville Township. We just felt when we wrote the regulations that it would be unfair on the 131 corridor to put a church 500 feet away from a church instead of another township that they don't care rather than there or not. So, we did not restrict it from that area out there. So we do have the applications put approved by the village council. Again, it does require a special exception use permit, which does require a public hearing, and so this was noticed in the newspaper, and a mailing was sent out to everybody within 300 feet of this parcel, while in advance of the 15-day noticing requirement. Those documents that are, I am, excuse me, those documents that I'm referring to are on page 13 of your staff report, the actual notice. On page 14 is the mailing list that was mailed out, and on page 15 is the 300-foot radius that was used to determine the property owners within that radius. As of today, I have had no communication by email, by mail, by verbal, either to support this request or be against this request. It does, it does fall in the district. So as a planning commission, you have the authority to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request. The building was already there, so it's a renovation of an existing building, so there was a site plan requirement to review on that. So basically, you are looking at reviewing section 250.703, number R, letter R is in Robert, that sets out the criteria in the zoning ordinance, page six in your report title. I'm sorry, that's six. Highlighted in yellow. And then 250, 1300 is the conditions for a special land use permit, and reviewing this. I don't find many deficiencies with it based on the zoning ordinance. I would just caution everybody that this is a kind of a hot topping, no matter where you go. There's a lot of people that are in favor of this type of activity, and there's a lot of people that are opposed to this activity. We need to make sure that when we are making our decision, that we're making it based off our zoning ordinance. So it's certainly, my recommendation in the back of the report is, my recommendation would be to issue a special exception land use for this property, but I would offer, that I would approve it with conditions, and that condition is simply that it must follow all federal, state, and local regulations, which would throw our local police power ordinance into play here. But as far as the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance is a very small component to this whole request, and I see no reason why you do not make the recommendation to move forward with it and make sure they follow the police power ordinance. So my recommendations on page 24 of your staff report continues around to briefly on to the conclusion of 25. That is my recommendation for you this evening. I would certainly entertain any questions or concerns if you'd like.
Does anyone from the board have any questions for Doug?
Okay.
Like you just said. Comments from the applicant or the representative?
I have one more for you. Justin, I just want to make sure, so the pictures you handed out, this is actually on the building, correct?
That's what it looks like now.
Is that going to be the name of the business?
Yes, sir.
That is not, we need to reflect. I recommend the planning commission reflect that although it's being application turned in under LRS, it should also be recognized by a business name of Space Station.
Space Station Canvas Center.
So that's our kind of DBA, who a business has.
Space Station what?
Canvas Center.
Do you have this elevator?
No, I can...
So any, any motions or recommendations, stipulations, need to also encompass that name, so there isn't any, well, I'm not LRS and Space Station, you guys said. LRS have restrictions, not Space Station.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's what you're trying to say right now.
Yeah, there's none of the paperwork that has been submitted, by knowledge even on the application on the village side, has got Space Station listed at all, so I think that LRS...
Based on image signage and the board, there's no...
Yes, for the size of the sign or anything.
Restrictions.
Is that just one side of the building that you have the Space Station logo?
So the locals are on the garage door, and then we actually have a company out of Belize Battle Creek that's doing the road sign, and we've been in conversation with the hydro company because we're pulling off their power to run a lit sign, so that is going to be the requirements that are on your guys' zoning for signs, as far as the height and the size that we will go.
I will have to look at this as far as all side of the...
Yeah, I don't know what it is from the building. I think it's 32 square foot on the road side, but that's not the same thing.
Any other questions? We were to the, Justin's opportunity to have the application.
Yeah, so LRS3, for a lot of these companies, even when we buy from grows, the business that has a license might just be R&amp;R real estate, but they're doing business as this grow shop. So that's kind of the name of what we're going, but our license, the state, is obtained by LRS3, and the state's requirements as well, as well as the local or municipality requirements, all fall under that license. So we are subject to any fines or anything the state has to do with that name or...
Yes.
Yes, LRS3. And then furthermore, I appreciate you guys letting us apply and have the opportunity. I know Niles is a similar city that was presented with something of this nature, as well as my bill, and they kind of let it get out of hand, and they have about three quarters of a mile, if you guys haven't seen it, 21 applications just went. It's crazy when you go on. And then a lot of the requirements as far as occupancy and just getting our final license, there will be a walkthrough with the local fire department, police department, as well as the state, so we're not allowed to open like any other business without meeting every state federal code.
Is there anything else, Justin? I think, I think I just don't want to cut you short.
No, no, you're fine. I, I, do you guys have any questions, though?
I'm, I'm sure there may be some more as we continue our address here, but I just want to try to stay in line with the agenda, so we don't get too far off life.
I have one question. With the LRS3 and the Space Station Canvas Center, does the paperwork need to be amended to include that?
How do you see this, then?
No, so what is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, the application going to the state for the state license is LRS, but I think, you know, any place you look, if you pull up this, this picture and say, well, this, this business is nowhere listed on any of our paperwork, I think we should document in the record that LRS is also known as...
Doing business as?
Having business as a state, as a space station.
I guess he is...
Yeah, Doug, I have a question for Doug. I'm Mike Natale, I own the building, and they're leasing part of it from me. Doug, the, the stipulations for the police and fire department, is that in your report?
That's under, that's under their licensing requirement with the state, it's not in our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if it did...
Our, our police-powered ordinance would say they have to comply, you know, they have to be able to work with the police department, that the police department has reason, under state law, they have...
Okay.
Certain parameters that they can go by.
Okay, but it's not in writing in the report?
It's in writing at the state.
Well, yeah, that, it's at the state level, and then the city has a guideline of, like, regulations that we can't, can't do.
Okay.
Not sure if that completely answers your question, Mike, but we'll get...
Yeah, I would just...
We'll figure out what those parameters are for it as soon as...
Yeah, they, the police have stopped by a couple times already, and they've been real good about it, they just said we're going to keep a close eye on everything and make part of a regular...
Routine.
Routine, and they're going to come by a lot. I mean, they come by already, but they're going to come by a lot more.
Now, we'll move into the public, comments from the public. Anybody, Paige, do you have any?
Is there a date for tentative opening?
So, to that note, tonight, if we get the special use permit, I believe it takes 24 hours to go into effect, and that is the final piece to my application for the state for me to turn that in, to start that 30-day walkthrough process. So we are at the home stretch to be ready within those 30 days, but we can't submit this final piece of that 72-page application without the city license or the zoning matching.
That was it?
That was it. Your goal is to...
Yeah, and definitely before September, that gets the city paid for the following tax year.
What, what is that date?
I would say September 1st is when they do the final count of what dispensers are opening to state, and then roll over to your first quarter.
Hearing all the public comment, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. I will second that motion by myself, second by Colin, close the public hearing, 21 minutes after six. All favors say aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Review the discussion by the planning commission. I guess this is the time where, you know, we can ask any questions, talk amongst ourselves, which direction we decide to go regarding the application and Doug's proposal, based on his knowledge and experience. I highly respect his opinion when it comes to most of these scenarios, and that is that we accept, based on zoning and with the recommendations that, special exception, we must comply with all federal, state, and local regulations. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding that? I, I think I want to elaborate just a little bit on, on that, only because, you know, I don't want there to be any surprises down the road. I know Justin said that, you know, that, that the feds and the state require, you know, police and fire to, to walk through. Who else was it?
So local fire department and the police, and then the actual state is going to send their agent to do the walk through.
And the state agent, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the biggest, the biggest thing I think we're going to face with here is modifications that have been made to commercial building without permit. You know what I mean? That's where the local jurisdiction is going to come into play. All these modifications and improvements were done without permit, and the building official, the electrical inspector, the mechanical inspector, you know, they're all going to need their opportunity to go in and make sure that this is bound to code, not only protect the citizens, they're going to be frequently, you know, visiting the establishment, but also the landlord and everyone else. So, with that being said, I think you're up against a few hurdles yet. Again, that's, that's just what, what we know at the local level, state, and, well, I don't know much beyond, you know, the local rules and regulations. I know for instance, there was some work done, the electrical inspector went in there and kind of had his way with, you know, with the project north of town. We have that same inspector here. As Doug prepares, this is paperwork for this, and then that's shared with Joe, right? This will all start, come, come ahead, but most of the time, none of that work starts until this has been approved, the prints have been approved. I'm assuming these are licensed, you know, R&amp;R competitive licensed, and the state of Michigan will have to be stamped and sealed before Doug will issue any permits.
Absolutely.
No, I'm sorry, not Doug, but Joe, more so than Doug, probably, but...
Well, they'll come with me and the packet and then also come with the Joe.
Yeah, yeah, so, I think that's where you're going to see, Mike, your list of things that you want to make sure checked off, you know what I mean? Beyond that, I've had several conversations with some of the neighbors just outside of the, of the mailing list, I think. But, you know, there's, there's some people that are in opposition of the industry as a whole, there's some people that, you know, say, you know, certainly not what their business was built on, but from a, from a financial standpoint, kind of makes sense. None of those people are here today, so I'm not really trying to use that to sway anybody's vote, but, you know, just, just going off some of the conversations I've had with some of the neighbors. Yeah, that's kind of where I, what I've got to say about it. I don't know if there's any other discussion or comments or concerns anybody else wants to bring up, but...
I will just tell you, Tyler, that I understand what you're saying, and I think I mentioned it before, there are people that are opposed to it, and there are people that are for it. One of the things we looked at when we decided to move forward to try to control the number, we looked at the last two votes that were taken about marijuana, and it passed in the village. So, again, it's a, it's a personal issue that we, I really would like to stay out of, but based on a vote with the people, if that would come to a referendum, they probably would have voted unlimited with, unlimited licenses, so, but I understand what you're saying, yes. And you can certainly, if you want to put in the special use permit, the certificate of occupancy for the renovation has to be obtained before the special use permit is issued, that's fine.
I like that, Herbich. I couldn't repeat it the way you just did, but if you were able to write that down, I'd like to, I'd like to include that. Certificate of occupancy.
So I think, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, so if I say this and it's not what you mean, let me know, but, so I think, if I'm understanding everything correctly, you would be approving the special use permit with the following conditions. Number one, that they abide by all federal, state, and local rules.
Yeah.
Number two, they have to go out and get the proper permits and a certificate of occupancy for the building after it's been renovated. And thirdly, that there will be a condition or an understanding that LRS is also known as Space Station Canvas.
Yep, that's exactly how I would understand it. Colin?
Sounds good.
Doug, just a quick question, I'm sorry. With that second condition, would that still, Doug, allow us to apply at the state level? Or I'm afraid I'll never be able to get that occupancy from the state without this license.
Would you be, would you be dishonest if you applied and said you were going to be open by a certain date or?
Well, I have to attach this license, I have to attach the zoning to it.
I don't, knowing that the state takes time to do it, I don't have a problem in giving him the special use permit because the conditions are going to be there.
Yeah.
So he will have to have a certificate of occupancy before he turns the key in that lock and open it to the general public.
Is, so we would be approving this, with those stipulations, so after this 24 hours, he would have his approval to apply to the state?
It doesn't even take 20, I mean, it'll take 24 hours, because I'm not going over the... There's nothing in the law that says you have to wait 24 hours. It's just how quick I get it taped up.
Oh, but you can bother me tonight.
Your wife gave me permission.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, that's all beyond me, Doug. I'm just looking out for, you know, all the other business owners in the community that have been encouraged and made to do things right and in order, you know what I mean?
I don't dispute what you're saying.
You know, I've got my tail in trouble, you know, long ago, and...
I want to apologize.
I, I want to apologize for that, too. We, the electrician we have there, I think we're going to have to use another gentleman that came out and looked at it. He was supposed to send it two weeks ago, somehow went to the township, and then Scott, I believe, from Sturgis pulled our ace back along with John on the left side for that, so what they were instead of John.
Got you.
The three conditions, just to be clear, so an approved special use permit, the certificate of occupancy, and all passing permits that are required for that, and then a condition or understanding that LRS three is also known as Space Station Cannabis Center.
See that very first part, what you said, again, please.
An approved special use permit.
So we're going to, we're going to issue a special use permit.
Yes.
And then the others are conditions that go with the special use permit.
Okay. So they follow.
Exterior illumination, is there any plan, do you do anything more than what you already have, or?
Yeah, we're going to add more lights to the outside that'll illuminate basically the corner of this building, going towards the storage units, and then along the side where we're parking and doing business, as well as one going towards like the factory RV, Scott's building.
Yeah. So did this, this person that drew your, your drawings up, did they do a photometric plan?
I would have to ask her if that's, is that like a certain terminology?
Photometric plan is the lights and how far.
Oh, all that's being added, yes. So that's on a separate one. That was just the delivery on the inside, and then I think there's a safety plan on the back that was attached, but that doesn't have the parking and lighting plan attached to it.
Right, we're going to all need a photometric plan as well.
Okay.
That, that stuff's all come to the local, right? We could sit here and come up with little things like this all night that, you know, state and local ordinance is so.
If this was a new building under construction.
Cat, you know what I mean?
If this was a new building under construction, we'd be looking at parking, we'd be looking at lighting, we'd be looking at landscaping.
Okay.
But this is a pre-existing building that, you know, lots of people will run up here and hang lights on the outside of a pre-existing building, and we didn't know that.
We're going to get the opportunity to, yeah, not tell the neighbor complaints about it, and then, you know, we're out there dealing with it.
But if we were, if we were truly doing a site plan, he would have to do the photometric plan, and we're just going, and you can make that as part of your requirements as well.
I just prefer that's all. Wouldn't, wouldn't Joe catch that, or?
Well, if he, so he does the photometric plan, I can look at it in our zoning margins, and so I guess this photometric plan is, I'll assume that.
I mean, I just don't want to see this place lit up like a space station, so.
No, no.
And, you know, they're captured in GPS signals, you know, from the other side of the country, just, just as a marketing tool.
No, no, we want to, we still have to follow your local sign and light orders on brightness.
You're putting in that they have to follow all local regulations, so.
Yeah.
The zoning ordinance is the lighting plan, so if they start doing all those big lights and doing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Donald or somebody used to do that when they had those.
Yep.
Crazy.
That signal.
Yeah, that, that would be in violation of our local ordinance, so we could take care of it.
Okay.
So those are already covered by something.
All right, does anybody want to, along with this, or? I'll make a motion that, that they approve the special use permit for LRS three slash Space Station Cannabis Center with the conditions discussed and noted. Do you have a second?
Two seconds.
We have a motion to support, we'll do a roll call for this right now.
Yes, please.
So we need, if you would just go to the.
Colin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Alex, yes, Alex?
Yes. Motion, do you think? No, Doug's not.
Just thinking.
Yeah, we're missing one, so I guess you would note that Al is not present.
Okay.
So motions carried. Is there any other business here before the board? We did discuss last meeting, it's going to take some time, Johnny, you aren't here, but looking through the ordinance book and, and trying to challenge ourselves to dive into that and make some additions and modifications as time goes on. I, I have not had the opportunity to do a whole lot of that, I'm not sure if anybody has, has either.
Just talking, kind of reading through a couple of chapters, and, you know, Johnny, you bring a different perspective to the board than I do, I'm a resident business owner. So if, you know, if there's things that you see that would fit, say, a business, we'd have to roll this way in the book, and say, well, you know, there's a lot of things we could change, say, a lot of sites ordinance to fit a certain type of business or something. Just kind of what could we do as a board to make it so a business coming into town doesn't have to come to get, say, a board review to change an ordinance or get a revision or what?
What's where?
Yeah, just something we could do to ease residents and business owners from having to come ask us to change something. Make, make, make the book fit our community a little bit better. I think, it, it's very good, but I think there's some places where we could improve that. I've got a few notes for in the future things. Like I said, don't go through the whole book at once and take a chapter or two wherever.
It's not going to take time, we're all busy, there's no deadline, but just wanted to get it on people's radars that, you know, thought.
One of the things that I talked to Jeff today was about, you know, maybe we don't have to, every quarter, you know, every quarter we're going to meet, try to pick something, we don't have to necessarily amend that right now, but maybe we could get two or three things, and then say, at the end of the year, Doug could go ahead and do all those at once, maybe save him a little time and us a little money, because that's going to cost money to change those things in the book, trying to get a little more bang for our buck, if you will.
You, you're going to add a lot more business coming into town as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but that's a good perspective, like you being a business owner, I'm glad you bring that side of things to the board, so I'm glad to have you here.
I will tell you that probably your next meeting, we will be holding a public hearing for the master plan. I think it's finally to the point where we can move forward, I will just tell you that the County, we did the Countywide Master Plan, it's taken a lot longer than I anticipated, it's taken a lot longer than what they anticipated. It's difficult because the guy that's reviewing it, kind of putting it together, is semi-retired, it only works one day a week, so he comes in and tries to catch up and do it, and I think some of the times between that and the other duties he has, he forgets where he's been or where he's gone, and so a lot of times we get an email that says, hey, we need to do this, and it's already been done. So I have reviewed it pretty much, picking out a few things for them. Again, I think it's taken a lot longer than what anybody anticipated. I want to hope that I don't get a black eye out of this at the end of the day, because this was my recommendation to the county to see if they would do a Countywide Master Plan. At the end of the day, I still think it's the best thing in everybody's interest, because right now, to get a master plan done by a planning affiliate, you're looking at twenty-five to forty thousand dollars, and this is costing every municipality in the county that joined it, it's costing them three thousand dollars. There are some of the portions of the master plan that are not going to affect you. You know, for example, Colton Township is part of the Countywide Master Plan, we don't have any authority over the Colton Township, but when we adopt the master plan, it will be all the maps, it will be a special section for the Village White Pigeon, and at the end of the day, we'll have a plan that was written by a planning company that should know what they're doing, and that will reset our master plan clock for five years. So hopefully we'll be ready to rule in public hearing in the next planning commission meeting.
Thanks for your data.
We haven't paid for the next scheduled planning commission meeting at this time.
July seventeen.
No. We don't leave it, it's not going to be till, yeah, next quarter.
Yeah.
That'd be July seventeen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just missed you guys.
Because the last one was in April.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
July sixteen is scheduled special.
Got you.
Does Justin have something special?
I just, I'll delay, maybe I'll look maybe for you guys back then.
All right, well, July seventeen. I'll make a motion.
It's John.
Second by, I'll never say hi.
Hi.
No, she carried.